Technology is great when it works, isn't it? It's good to be here this evening. I appreciate everybody turning out on this cold January day. Although it's kind of balmy compared to what it was this morning and the last couple of days. So, thank you Edgewood Baptist Church and Pastor John for hosting this meeting. Appreciate them and their hospitality. Appreciate all of you again coming out and delving into this really challenging issue. I was talking to somebody earlier about when it comes to controversial issues, it's tough to get people to come together because I think our nature is to avoid controversy or conflict, but that's not the intent of this meeting. It's not to elevate blood pressure, it's not to go after local officials, it's not to appoint blame to anybody, but it's more along the lines of what the prophet Isaiah has said, "Come, let us reason together." One reason why we're meeting right now is because this issue has not been discussed. There have been no public meetings, there's been little input from both sides, it's not gone through the legislative process, and that's one of the big issues we have. I fought on the front of the gambling lines, if you will, or fought this for 15, 20 years. And for years they told us in Frankfurt that we need to amend the Constitution or pass a state statute in order to expand gambling, particularly at the racetracks. Where we are right now is we've arrived at expanded gambling with an unelected state board, it's the Kentucky Horse Racing Commission, that all of a sudden on their own decided that casino gambling is legal. And they did that about 10 years ago, there's a lawsuit that is still being fought today, and there's another lawsuit by the way against Oak Grove Casino, that was just filed a couple weeks ago by another track. So we're going to explore some of these challenges, and my hope is that you will be better informed. The media's here, I want to thank the media for coming and covering this, but we just have been really kept in the dark. We've not been informed. Before I go too much further into it, I need to acknowledge a couple other people here. I've got a couple of Commonwealth Policy Center Board members, Paul Harold, Paul where are you? Paul is in the back. Paul, thank you for coming out tonight and also for serving on the CPC Board. And also Marty Bozarth, Marty is here, where are you Marty? Marty's over there, thank you Marty, I didn't see you there, thank you. And also Ben Taylor, came down from our Frankfurt office, Ben is my assistant, Ben thank you for joining us. What I want to do is to go through a number of points that have not been discussed regarding this expansion of casinos. How many of you heard about this by the way? I'm just curious, if I could see a show of hands. Before you heard from us, how many knew that a casino was scheduled to open up in Oak Grove, Kentucky? How many heard about this before CPC reached out to you? Less than half, maybe quarter of you hardware that? Many of you are right here in Hopkinsville or in Christian County, which is amazing that this major public policy decision has happened upon us and people really don't know about it. And that says something I think in itself, that we have not been apprised of what's going on, we've not been part of the process. Our legislators by the way, and I think a couple of our legislators who are here this evening, State Senator Whitney Westerfield, thank you, Myron Dossett, thank you, State Representative who covers Oak Grove, Walker Thomas is here, and who else? Did I miss any other elected officials who are here this evening? Somebody in the back, City Councilman, magistrate? Magistrate, thank you for coming. Any judge executives or mayors here this evening? Make sure I acknowledge the elected officials. Thank you all for coming. The reason I point them out right now is because the day after the announcement, I was on the phone with several of them and I said, "Hey, were you aware that this casino, this license was given to the West Kentucky Development to open the casino in Oak Grove?" One of them didn't know until after the announcement, couple knew, maybe an hour or two before. They weren't even aware of what was going on either. So one of the things that this lawsuit leveled or filed against West Kentucky, against the West Kentucky Development Corporation, says that before a new racetrack license is issued, there needs to be a cost-benefit analysis done. That wasn't done. Cost-benefit looks at the pros and the cons, and they have not done that. I already mentioned this, has the community weighed in? Have there been public hearings in Oak Grove or in Christian County? No. Have existing casinos, and I'm talking about casinos in other parts of the country, have they delivered on their promises? You know, one thing that's inherent in the casino industry or the gambling industry is that they're big on over-promising, but they under-deliver. It's pie in the sky, it's going to bring in economic development, new jobs, it's going to bring in tourists, it's going to be good for the economy, and it's going to be a good revenue stream for the government. And that often isn't the case. Another consideration is that casinos hold an unfair advantage over existing businesses. If you look at what happened in Atlantic City, New Jersey, they were the first city to legalize casino gambling outside of Nevada, in 1978 is when they legalized them. Independent restaurants declined by 60% within a 10-year time period, and the reason why is because there was an uneven playing field there. Independent restaurants did not have casinos to attract patrons. Casinos that had restaurants could offer free and discounted meals, and that's not fair to the mom-and-pop businesses that actually don't have a casino, they can't comp their customers, they actually have to pay for their food, pay their waitresses, and it was an uneven playing field to the point where they ended up going out of business. The gambling mentality corrupts government, we've seen it here in Kentucky, the Bob Trot scandal back in the early 1990s where bribes were paid by the horse racing industry to legislators for their votes, and we've seen it in other places as well. Alabama had a major casino scandal where bribes were being paid to high-level officials in their legislature for certain benefits that they would grant them through legislation. Gambling leads to the addiction for many. This is a real issue here that we should be concerned about. Not everybody will develop an addiction, not everybody will become a compulsive gambler, but some will, and we should be concerned about this. I was on the phone with the office of an elected official here in Christian County, I won't say who it was, what office or what level of government, but this person I was talking to heard about Commonwealth Policy Center, was aware of this town meeting, and thought that the casino was good. And this person said to me, "You know, my view is that if you don't like the casino, just don't go there." And I thought, okay, you know, I guess I could do that, I guess I could be quiet and let whatever wants to move into the community move in. But is that good for my community? Am I caring for my neighbor? Am I caring for my children or my family to let that happen? And the answer is no, that's right. And what motivates me is because I care deeply about Christian County, I care about the businesses that come in, I care about the effects that certain businesses have on families and on the community, and that's why we're here this evening. Gambling preys on the hopes of the poor. Many of you are at the gas station in the area and you see people playing scratch-off games, and just by taking a look you realize that a lot of those people probably can't afford it. It preys on the hopes of the poor, and I think one of the most deceiving things that our state government does is that Kentucky Lottery Hall, their tagline says, "Somebody's going to win, and it might as well be you." And people that are not successfully, successful economically, they're struggling, they listen to what the state's saying and they're playing lottery, and that's unfortunate. Gambling is counterintuitive to a healthy life and business principles. Here's a question I often bring up when we do meetings like this. If gambling is such a good revenue stream, then why don't financial advisors tell their clients, "Hey, take some of your retirement portfolio and go play the Kentucky Lottery, or go to the casino and play some." That's bad advice, that financial advisor would be out of business if he was telling I want to go back to a slide, and I've jumped ahead of my assistant up there, I don't have a remote here to use, but I want to go back to one of the slides that talks about the over-promising. I glossed over it, there was a study that came out from, a report from ProPublica, not necessarily a conservative news outlet, that they assessed the promise made in Illinois in 2012, the Illinois Legislature was promised $2.5 billion if they were to legalize casino gambling across the state. In 2018, ProPublica reported that just a little over a billion, they were about a billion short really in that promise that was made. So again, they over-promised and they ended up under-delivering. That's what we see in other communities as well, that they buy into this promise of casino riches, but they're often left with, on the short end of the stick, and I'm afraid that's what's going to happen to Oak Grove. I care about Oak Grove, I care about the community in Christian County, and I think all of you are as well. So I want to leave you with a few action items, and then I'm going to invite Lieutenant Governor Janine Hampton to come up and share her perspective on this. I believe that this is a spiritual battle, and the media can report that, I don't mind them reporting. If you just look at the news items in the last week, the New York Legislature legalizing abortion up to the ninth month in pregnancy and utero. You look at Virginia following suit, Virginia's governor came out essentially saying infanticide in some cases is legal. Saw the radio interview, the little clip where he essentially tried to justify infanticide. And then I see schemes like this where casinos are making their way into communities saying, "This is your economic development tool, this is the way to go." At the heart of this, it's a spiritual battle that we're facing, and I encourage you to pray, if there's a spiritual battle taking place, the battle begins on our knees, we got to pray for our Commonwealth, we got to pray for those leaders in office, local and state-level leaders. And the second thing is, we need to contact local officials. I'm going to put up something in a little bit of contact information, email addresses and phone numbers for the Christian County Fiscal Court and the Oak Grove City Council. Contact your local officials and ask them to stand against this thing. There's a petition that we have available, I'd like for each one of you to take a petition with you to your churches, to your workplace, and ask your friends and colleagues, tell the church members to sign that petition. At the bottom of it, there is an address where you can send the completed petitions to, and we hope to bring these to local leaders. We have some resources on the back table that would help educate you and educate your friends on this issue, take those resources with you. In particular, there's a backgrounder that brings up the number of the things that I shared with you right now. Then write letters to the editor, you're gifted in writing. Write a letter to the editor, to the Kentucky New Era, the Katie's Record, Todd County Standard, the Oak Grove, the Eagle Post I believe it is, write letters to the editor. And then after you've done all this, pray some more, pray some more. We are meeting here tonight because I believe that this can be stopped, it can be derailed, even though things are moving ahead, full speed ahead, but it can be stopped. But we need God's help, we need His mercy, and we need God's people to engage this issue as well, and that's where you come in. I believe that when you make yourself available to Him and take action, that you can change the course of this issue. I want to thank you again for coming, I want to welcome Lieutenant Governor Janine Hampton, she's a personal friend, and she's a friend of the Commonwealth as well. She is a reluctant politician, she would tell, and she doesn't even like to be called a politician, she is a public servant, and she was reluctant to get involved early on, but I need to say thank you for your willingness to step into the fray and to run for office. Janine is a native of Detroit where casino developers made the promise of, you know, economic advancement and more revenue coming in, but they didn't deliver, and being a native, she saw it before and after, and so she's here to share her perspective on this issue. Welcome Janine Hampton.
By the way, I want to point out, this picture is reversed for some reason, it's taken over three years to get our live shot anyway, to do anything correct with it, and for some reason they reversed the picture, so you see the ring, I actually am married, somebody reported I was not married because they looked at this picture, so it's kind of interesting, but there's some trivia for you. But thank you for having me here tonight, thank you Richard for having me. This topic has come up since the 2015 campaign. This was a topic on the campaign trail about legalizing gambling and legalizing marijuana and other things so we could get money so we could pay off the pension. And I have some thoughts on gambling, based on my experience in Detroit. I'm from Detroit, born in 1958, and for me, things are broken into before the riots and after the riots. So the riot was in 1967, before 19, up to that point, 1967, Detroit was actually really nice. I remember, you know, there were mom-and-pop stores, and believe it or not, it was relatively safe to walk, we walked everywhere, no problems. And after the riots, of course, there was a lot of wreckage, I'll say, a lot of people moved away, anybody who could moved away, and that set off a whole chain of events that lasted for decades. It lasted for decades where, to the point where the school systems deteriorated, no one wanted to open a business in Detroit, the business climate wasn't good, crime spiked, the neighborhoods deteriorated, we saw that firsthand, and it just simply wasn't good. So I actually moved away from Detroit in 1985, but I was kind of still watching what was going on. But in 1999, they voted to bring in casinos, and so they thought this was their answer to their woes, because they had high unemployment, they had a high poverty rate, and they just figured this was the way to go to get jobs into the city. Now, as I was doing my research on this topic tonight, I found some information on, I was actually looking for economic impact on Detroit, and there actually is a study that looked at the impact of the casinos on the retail spaces around the casinos. And, you know, there's some of it good, some of it bad, and then there were general studies I found that talked about the impact of gambling, and some of it was good, some of it was bad. I think the most interesting line I saw was something like, it said, "Transactions at a casino are mutually beneficial and voluntary." So there you go. Mutually beneficial, meaning it helps both the casino and the person, which I'm not sure about that. But here's my observation though. So Detroit brought in, they brought in three casinos, all downtown, and actually, it was kind of changed the landscape down there, and if, you know, you may have heard that Detroit's coming back, they spent a lot of money in downtown Detroit. In fact, if you go there now, you'll do what anybody does when they visit any place, you stay away from the bad parts and you go to the touristy parts, all right? That's what you do, you go to the safe parts. So you might go to the ballpark, you might go to Fox Theater, you might go to the riverfront in the summertime where there's all kinds of festivals and food and stuff like that, maybe you go to the casinos, you know, you might do that. But the neighborhoods are the real story though. There are still issues, I can tell you today, there's still issues in the neighborhoods. That money has not extended into the neighborhoods. Now, my take on this, my take on bringing in casinos, of course, when I was looking at the studies, they looked at, there was some very loose cost-benefit analysis. In fact, one report had all this data, and then their conclusion, I thought, was very unscientific, it said casinos, the benefits of gambling probably outweighs the costs, probably. And I was kind of surprised to see that loose word in that study, probably. But when I was in grad school, I learned something called opportunity cost. And what an opportunity cost is this, it is what else, what could you be doing with your money? What could you have done with your money had you not done this thing? So before I go there though, let me just tell you that the casinos have not solved Detroit's problems. They still have crime, they have one of the worst school systems in the nation, they still have people who have moved away, in fact, I was there last year, and we had to get off the freeway early, we were headed somewhere downtown, we had to get off the freeway early, so we actually drove pretty close to where I grew up, and I'm sitting in the backseat, the troopers are in the front, I almost cried, because I did not recognize the place, I didn't recognize the neighborhoods. In some neighborhoods, most of the homes are gone, or the homes that are still there are falling down. We passed my junior high school, I didn't recognize it. You ever seen an old barn that's been standing and over time, it just collapses? I saw houses like that. But one of the worst school systems in the nation, I think the last I heard, the graduation rate was less than 25%, they've got issues, high poverty, high unemployment, you know, the car companies are still there, but they have some issues. But they decided in the 90s that their, the way to solve this was to bring in casinos. And granted, the casinos have provided some jobs, but what could, I submit that their time would have been better spent figuring out what to do to address the school system. Their time would have been better spent to figure out what they could do to develop their workforce so that they could attract other businesses who would hire, businesses that would make things. You know, one of the things I love about Kentucky, I sold back, in fact, Hopkinsville was part of my sales territory when I sold boxes. Continental Mills here in town, you know, are you guys familiar with Continental Mills? I'm proud to tell people that Denny's Pancakes, all the Denny's Pancakes east of the Rockies are made in Hopkinsville, Kentucky. I'm pretty proud of that. I love that Uncrustables are made in Kentucky, Hot Pockets are made in Kentucky, do you guys know that? You know, we've got Fords, we've got Toyotas, Corvettes, my hometown, a bowling green where I live now, only plant in the world that makes Corvettes. We make stuff and I'm pretty proud of that. I love that, you know, we've got people who go in there and they can, oh, Mrs. Schubert's rolls. Who bought Mrs. Schubert's rolls over Thanksgiving and passed them off as their own? Don't feel bad. But Mrs. Schubert's, here's something you may not know, they also make those tasty breakfast rolls that go on the sandwiches at Chick-fil-A.
I knew it.
So I'm pretty proud of that stuff. I'm pretty proud of the manufacturers all over Kentucky, and I love that Governor Bevin is working to bring more business here, and we're working on workforce development, and we're working to shoulder that up so that we can attract more and more businesses here. The last thing I want to do is bank our future on an industry, and it's entertainment, it's entertainment, right? Gambling is entertainment. The last thing I want to do is bank our future on a scheme that is based on other people losing money. I don't want to do that. I'm Dave Ramsey girl, do you guys know who Dave Ramsey is? Yes, Live on Less Than You Make, that guy, right? Pay off your debts, pay off your house unreasonably early, you know, that guy, right? Have three to six months of expenses saved so that you, I mean, he makes a lot of sense to me. Dave Ramsey makes an immense amount of sense to me, so I simply cannot advocate for an industry that's based on other people losing money.
I'll also say much what Lieutenant Governor said in reference to morality. I am not the guy who is in favor of legislating morality or passing laws to impose my belief. I believe that's the great thing about our nation. I understand that the allure of money coming into our community is not just important, it is absolutely critical to our survival and to the good of our children. Like Ms. Hampton said, the easy way is not the right way. I'm kind of a Dave Ramsey guy myself. Dave Ramsey said that if you want to be rich, live like a rich person. That's not living above your means. I've not seen too many Bentleys pulling in to the Quick Stop to get tickets. But when we talk about money, I just want to state that, you know, I go to work five days a week, just like many of you here, I long to be retired, just like some of you here. When I finish my job, I go home and do what is my full-time second job, I work second shift full-time, and that's my joke of saying I'm a bivocational pastor. I know that there are lobbyists, I know that there are investors, I know that there are powerful figures, even within our government, that want to bring casinos here. I know that there are many who feel that this is our pot of gold. In my experience as a soldier, I had the opportunity to be stationed in an area near Las Vegas, and I stayed in Las Vegas every other week for over a year. I can tell you that the pot of gold has an underside, and no one is shining the underside of that pot. It's a very dark place, there are many, many more negative things brought about by the influence of casinos than what you realize. I'll never forget one night, I was, I had gone out to dinner, much of what Richard said, it was weird to call you Richard Brother, I love you. Much of what Richard said referenced the mom-and-pop restaurants is true. It was very difficult to simply go to a restaurant to eat, you had to go into a casino for the most part to just get a meal. I'd left one night, I walked, you can't tell it by looking at me now, but I was once a pretty fit kind of fellow, again, I was in special operations, I'm not afraid of too many things. I walked out, I had that sense about me that said, "I do not want to walk the three blocks to my hotel." I called an Uber, I got an Uber, I got in, I felt, to be honest with you, I felt a little bit weak, and I said to the gentleman, I told him what I had experienced, and he said, "You made a very wise choice to not walk the three blocks to your hotel." As I say that, without attempting to label or box our arguments or agreements, I just want to take a minute to find a spot of common ground. I had a very dear neighbor of mine, a farmer in Trigg County, and we would often stand and talk, in what we called fence talks, where we would stand on opposite sides of our farms and talk, and I always adored my neighbor and thought a lot of that. So the common ground that I'd like to look at tonight isn't that we're running from a casino. We're not here to bash or to cause dissension to the casino, but we rather want to focus our efforts on something too that we want to be, we want to, like Lieutenant Governor said, we want industry, we want jobs, we want factories. The jobs that the casinos will bring are not the kind of jobs that will generate wealth and revenue for young families. If we look at it from that fact and the economic growth, we want prosperity, we want to capitalize on the I-24 corridor, we want a place to be able to take our families and our friends, we want to have a place to take our children to learn and enjoy, we want wholesome, actionable things that will draw other venues, more investment, more positive influences to you, sir. Mr. Westerfield, thank you for all you do at the airport, that is a valuable economic asset to our community, and I appreciate that. That said, I just want to share briefly my time when I was a young, impressionable soldier, not close to home, or the positive influences that I grew up in, in rural America. There are never any time that we can say never's an always, in my opinion, but I'm going to generalize. When a young soldier comes here to Fort Campbell and joins one of the over 50,000 soldiers on this post, most of them are here for the first time away from their homes. Most of them are young, full of vigor and energy and some other vernaculars that we don't want to say. It's a joke, you can laugh. This will go a lot faster if you laugh. But they get here and they are looking for something to latch onto, they are looking for something to be involved in, and the casino will reach out to them. These young soldiers will see the glitter and the glitz and the glamour, and listen, let me tell you something. This is a... This is a little-known secret about young men away from home for the first time. They're looking for ladies. They are. The casinos will promise them ladies. The casinos will promise our young women who are here places to go and for entertainment. It is a slippery, slippery slope of financial debt load, addiction, poor decisions, foreclosures of homes, marred service at best of their military careers, and failed marriages. In my 30-plus years of being around soldiers, one of the reasons that I have the job that I have today and I continue to work is because I love our men and women who are willing to put on a uniform. They are absolutely our most precious resource. If we fail them and don't give them other opportunities for a positive outpouring of their energy and their enthusiasm, they will draw to the negative. It's human nature, folks. You're gonna have young families who wives are forced to work outside the homes. They will take employment in a casino, which is not a wholesome family environment. It is a slippery slope. I think you catch the picture I'm painting. You will have young men who have young families who are living paycheck to paycheck, for whatever the reason, and they are gonna look for the easy out. They are gonna go to the casino to try to hit the jackpot, to provide for their young family, because it is an alternative that is there for them. It's much easier than taking a second job. Maybe they can't do it because of their schedule. They will become addicted to the lifestyle and the detriments of gambling. It's not an if or a but. When we look at that, there are gonna be countless agencies in our community that are gonna deal with the fallout. Our churches are gonna deal with the fallout. Our folks who are minister, doing whatever kind of ministries there are, our food banks, our clothing lending closets, our counseling centers. Our lawyers are gonna get rich off of this. I know it's been partially addressed again. Ma'am, you did a phenomenal job with my notes. But the truth is, is that crime is gonna rise. The things that a casino will bring to our community are not the positive things that we want. The things that a casino will bring to our community is an opportunity, in my humble opinion, for increased opportunity for human trafficking, for an increased opportunity in drugs in our community. I'm pretty sure, I speak for everyone, we have enough drugs in our community already. It's gonna put an increased burden on our law enforcement folks. It's gonna put an increased burden on the infrastructure that we have. On everything that our community is based, it is not ready for a $150 million investment toward taking the money out of the hands of hard-working people and putting it in the pockets of people who are not in this community. Again, just my opinion. I'm gonna just tell you a quick story. I had a young man who was my replacement in Las Vegas. We had done what is called a left-seat, right-seat ride, and that's kind of pilot speak for the old guy showing the new guy what's going on. We got off of our airplane at the Vegas Airport. We each got in our rental cars. And I told him before we went, I knew who he was. He was, he was kind of one of those Jesus guys. He had impeccable morals. And I said, "You're not gonna like this." And he said, "No, no, Tim, I'm fine. This is great. It's gonna be a great assignment." I said, "Okay." We drove the short distance from the airport to McDonald's with, and I'm not exaggerating, trucks that drive up and down the streets with very, 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 very scantily clad young women on them with phone numbers where you can order a woman to be like a pizza delivered to wherever you want. We get out of the car at McDonald's. He looked at me, and he told me, "You have brought me to hell." It's a lot like that. Vegas isn't all the glimmer and glitz. I'll share just lastly, just one thing I want to share in closing. I want to go back to those young soldiers. A lot of a young soldier's career is foundational. No good home is built without a good foundation. And if you take a young soldier and you put him here and you expose him to these things, then quite frankly, he just doesn't realize what he's getting into. The things that he risks getting, aside from all the things that come with all the other things, but just looking at the financial impact, is if he gets addicted to gambling, if he gets in a financial crisis because of his habits and what he picks up at the casino, he also risks his security clearances. Every soldier that stays in long enough gets put in a position of greater responsibility. It's part of the oath that we take. With that greater responsibility comes background checks, comes security clearances. You cannot get a security clearance if you have these things on your record or in your history. Would you really want someone who is able to be leveraged by the power and allure of money and the things that come with it, being responsible for our nation's secrets, our nation's wartime plans, and for leading, again, our most precious assets? Your sons and daughters, your grandchildren, and your nieces and nephews? I have served the men and women in uniform since 1987. I have been on all sides of the coin, and as a soldier, as a leader, and as the parent of two now about to be officers in the United States Army. This is just my, what I want for my community.
Hi, I'm Richard Nelson with the Commonwealth Policy Center. You can find more of our videos on YouTube and Vimeo. And for more information about the Commonwealth Policy Center, go to our website, commonwealthpolicycenter.org.